Time is six o'clock. I'd like to draw the meeting to order. I call the meeting to order. Begin with the electronic attendance, please.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman David Potter, David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman Large Sonia Bird, to the Committee of the Whole and Council Meetings July 7, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Waldron. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. This evening, I have a board appointment that I'd like to recommend to the council. I'd like to recommend that Chris Mathias serve on the Moline Community Development Corporation as staff representative. So he would serve with a vote. Is that right? I think that that position has a vote, yeah. Do you all have any questions for me? Yes. Alderman. Yes. Can you hear me better now? My microphone was a little ways away. Sorry about that. I'd like, if anyone would please support a motion to approve. We have a motion by Alderman Potter was the motion, and the second was Alderman Went. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Do we have any questions on the agenda this evening? I'd like to begin with the agenda items. The first item is amendment to Chapter 35 of the Moline Code of Ordinances, and this is regarding fence and wall requirements. Chris Mathias will be presenting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pick up my mask here so you can hear me better. So this is, this first item here is part of our, as I'm sure you're aware, the council's 2020 goals for the Plan Commission. We've had eight different items that we're looking at. This is not going to be the last item you're going to see on fence requirements. And we can talk more about that in a minute if you're curious, but the point I'm making is that we continue to look at these items and we continue to revise them as we see fit. And with me kind of taking over this position the last three months, there are some things I've realized, like I said, as I do this job, that we're going to propose some tweaks. So anyway, what we have for you tonight, this came out of the Plan Commission's discussion that they would like to prohibit chain link fences in the front yards of properties, and it'd also be the side and rear yards of properties that are adjacent to public street right of ways and public avenues, of course. So if you're familiar with the way our code is now, it really just said it needed to be screened when it was in the front yard, and it really just, what it did is it made it very, very difficult to put a chain link fence in the front yard. And so we're just tweaking that to really, if you want to prohibit it, let's just prohibit it outright when it's visible from those right of ways. And like I said, the front yard and then the side and rear yards if it's visible from right of ways or adjacent to them. The other thing, like you'll see in there, is it just kind of tweaks some other odd materials that were used to build, that would use for fence construction, but it's just saying, it doesn't matter if you can view them or not, they're prohibited altogether. So staff is, recommendation here is to concur with the Plan Commission and to approve this item.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron.
Second.
A second by Alderman Moyer. Are there any questions for Chris or discussion? Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm in favor of this change, but I have two things to come up. And Chris, you and I have communicated about it. One is, I got your email regarding the utility companies that they're exempt from this right now. And it doesn't look from their communication like there's any reason for state or federal law or even, it doesn't even look like a safety concern so much as just a cost concern for them. And so I'll support this, but I would like the Plan Commission to revisit the exception for the utility companies. Because we get a few of them around town, substations and everything that are, you know, they used to be have latency being around them and all that stuff, but years ago, those were all taken away. And so now they're just old, rusty chain link fences around those substations.
Alderman Went, are you proposing an amendment or are you just making a request that they revisit it?
I'm making the request.
Are there any other comments or questions? Alderman Waldron?
Chris, what is it? Existing folks or grandfathered?
Correct. So the way our zoning code works, pretty much for anything, it either has to get torn down and when it's replaced, it meets our code. Or in the, sometimes there's a value of, you know, if you put so much money into something that eventually you have to replace it and then it has to conform, but that's typical with a lot of our, pretty much any item in our zoning code, that it would be grandfathered in until it needs to be replaced.
Thank you.
Alderman Moyer?
I'm just curious how this came up, because there are dozens and dozens and dozens of these around town, and none of them are screened in. And is it just like it's an eyesore or?
Right, I think, I think there's probably a couple of things. One, you've got some that are probably pre-2006 when that, when that new zoning code went in place. And then you might have went up and weren't reported. You know, staff don't, staff have never built a system of, you know, driving the city, you know, it's more a complaint-driven thing, or if you're out visiting a complaint, you might see something else. So, so that could be that too. But yeah, the point here would be from now, you know, once this is passed, you know, you wouldn't, if it's reported, it's going to get enforced. And like I said, if you're seeing those around town, you know, you want us to check on it, we can certainly check on the dates. A lot of times in their area photo, you can kind of interpret some of that stuff.
Alderman Went?
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that our chain link fences are notorious for difficult to hedge and weeds screw it up through them, and if a resident isn't very diligent, they can become shabby and meh very quick. But Alderman Waldron, your question, I guess this would also be my request is for the Commission to review how to address those grandfathered ones, whether it's maybe you have a 10-year grandfathered timeframe, but within that 10 years, they have to be replaced or reoperated. To see if that would be something that would be viable, I don't know. Obviously, we want to get Dirk's input on that, on what that timeframe might be, so that we know we're not just taking his clause. But I think that that would be a subject for the Plan Commission to review as well, that I'd like to see.
Something else I'd like to suggest is, we had a little bit of an incident with signs. Do you remember that? In the historic district or the restricted district, and we notified the sign company. Do you think we could do, offer the same courtesy to our fencing companies, our local fencing companies, and let them know that fences are, chain link fences are prohibited in these circumstances?
We certainly could, and like I said, we have another, I think Mayor, you had saw, you had been including an email where the person had a very large fence in their backyard, and it was a kind of a hole in our code, I guess, where you can literally build a fence that tall as long as you bring it five feet back. So that's going to be another tweak we'll have come in here too. So I think as we open that discussion again on fences, we'll include these items and can include that item as well, contacting the companies once we have all those changes approved.
Okay. Are there any other discussion points? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Oh, wait, we have to do roll call on this, don't we? Forgive me, I'm sorry, guys, I forgot. We have to go through roll call on these. Roll call, please. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? We can hear you. Are you an aye or an nay?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams? Parker? Went? Eight ayes, no nays. Thank you. Motion carries. Should I go back and do a roll call for the?
They were all unanimous, so we'll reflect, and then it's the roll call.
Dirk had said before, if that happens, it's fine.
Oh.
Just to let it go.
All right. Do you want me to, the one I recall?
Yes, the roll call should be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The next item is also Chris Mathias. Amendment to Chapter 35 of the Moline Code of Ordinances. This is regarding multiple family dwelling.
Yes, it's a proposal from a property owner and developer on Seventh Street in the Old Town neighborhood. That zoning there is NC Neighborhood Center, and so what he would like to do is put an apartment on the first floor of his, of his building there. As you're probably familiar with, that's a commercial area on the first floor, apartments up above, and it's always been viewed that way as staff when we're administering this. So the idea of an apartment on the first floor, we've always seen as a multifamily dwelling. It becomes an apartment effect via our code and the way we classify that. Anyway, I know this is a very long explanation. I was telling you that the staff recommendation on this change is to deny it, and the Plan Commission recommended the same. They agreed with staff. What we did find for the applicant was that a duplex is actually allowed in the Neighborhood Center District. And so my zoning interpretation here, and the Plan Commission agreed with me on this, was if we have one building and we have an apartment up above and an apartment on the bottom, it's effectively the same as what a duplex was defined as our code. And so really, the applicant got what he was after. I mean, he's satisfied with it, but the official recommendation from staff on this zoning request to actually change the code is to deny that request. And if you, because the Plan Commission agreed with that and agreed to deny it, it would take a two-thirds majority vote of the council to overturn that. But that's, that's the recommendation of staff is to concur with the Plan Commission to deny it.
Is there a motion to concur with Planning Commission?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Schoonmaker?
Muted.
He's getting there. Oh, no. Hello, we can hear you now, Kevin. Oh, no, we can't.
There we are. A little hard to understand. It's kind of breaking up a little bit. But basically, he is being allowed to do this because it's under the code. Yeah, it's a duplex. I didn't quite follow.
Correct. So a duplex is allowed in the Neighborhood Center. So my interpretation as the zoning administrator would be that if you have, if you have a single building and you have one apartment up above and one apartment down below, that that is, a duplex is allowed, and also what we call a two-flat is allowed. And those are both two-unit, dwelling unit buildings. So in my opinion, this is consistent with our zoning code, and it did satisfy the applicant. But like I said, the actual request to rezone, we recommend to deny, and the Plan Commission concurred with that. Correct. Correct.
Alderman Went?
Right, well, I mean, yeah, I think when he first came in, that was, because if you view it all as one building, you might have multiple apartments on the first floor or whatever, but the truth of it is, it's like four buildings attached, you know, together. So when we really got down and looked at the code and ways that we could help them, it just happened to be, like I said, I would have never thought about a commercial building on Old Town as something you'd call a duplex. I just would have not thought of it that, but as I got the code out and you worked through possible solutions, it just happened to work for everybody. And it really is something that's, you know, if a duplex is allowed and a two-flat is allowed, I don't see why we wouldn't allow a building with one apartment on the top and one apartment on the bottom. So that's just kind of, it just kind of flushed out as we went through the process, and he ended up being satisfied with the result.
Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams? Parker? Went? Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. The next item is, will be presented by Eric Griffith. Legal Stevie's License and Concession Agreement. Eric, are you on the call? We can.
Perfect, thank you. So, well, Stevie's School Trackers are looking for license and concession agreement with the City of Moline to sell photo packages at the northeast part of Skins Park. This was approved by Park Board and, and looking for approval this, I remember, for July 17, 2022, July 16, 2021.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Alderman Potter. A second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams? Parker? Went? Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. The next item is also Eric Griffith, and it is London Licensing Agreement.
Yes, they're looking to extend their agreement. So they're down there currently, or now, that forward, for February 18, 2019, to August 21st, 2020. They're looking to extend that for August 21st, so the end of 2021. We have no complaints about that. Parker voted for the last one, so we're over. Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker.
Second.
A second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams? Parker? Went? Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. The last item is the School District Agreement, presented by Chief Goll.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Council. This is the annual reimbursement agreement for four police officers assigned to the Moline School District for the 2020, 2021 school year, starting in the fall. The district will reimburse 40% of the salary and benefits. That chart is attached. To show you how that's broken down and reflects the reimbursement, $207,739 by the school district. You might have a question about, well, you know, with school being out, how is that program still working to help our school district? I had a conversation with the superintendent in March, and then recently, I think it was last week. And we have a great partnership, still working very diligently with the school staff to help locate children on responsive remote learning. They distributed meals during school lunch, routinely checked on the schools and ensured they were secure from playground use and vandalism, helped with the school close out or clear out, continue to work 148 juvenile cases, as well as covered other duties at the police department. And in the fall, we're prepared to adapt to a new schedule. That hasn't been released by the school district yet, so we'll wait to see what that looks like. We're expecting some sort of full-time school work, but alternating maybe on the kids or where they're at or some sort of plan. So I expect that to be very busy. We may have to spread out in other buildings and things. So I think that that would be a pretty big risk in the fall. So staff would recommend approval for the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Potter?
Yeah, Chief, in light of some of the things that are happening nationwide, has there been any discussion with the school board or school administration about allocating different resources in this area or something? I mean, have they expressed any concerns about additional things that could be done in the school situation that might not necessarily require an officer?
Yeah, so we have a really good relationship with the school district. I've had conversations with Superintendent Savage, and we're more than security there, you know, looking to develop those relationships and provide programs. That's actually outlined in some of the job description and building relationships with the children and having, fostering those positive interactions. We're always looking for new ways, and hopefully here in the coming weeks and months, I'll have some other interesting things to present to you about expanded roles of social services and things of that nature that we're looking at, but constantly trying to do better for our community.
Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams? Parker? Went? Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. We do not have an other this evening, so we're going to move into the informational section, and we'll begin with the administrators' update. Marty Vonix.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to tell you today, but you should have received an email, our weekly council report. And if you have any questions, always feel free to give me a call or email me. The second thing I want to talk about is we started today on our, what we talked to you about earlier, our Project Colossus, which is to review all the TIP agreements and related development agreements. And so our internal task force started that today. We've already made great progress by compiling a lot of the files electronically. So we'll be reporting to the council on some outcomes once completed. I can't tell you an exact date, but it'd certainly be before the end of the year. And our strategy will be to recharge and rejuvenate, hopefully, some of our TIP districts.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Do you have any questions for Marty? The next item is the COVID-19 update.
Thank you. I am happy to introduce our finance director, who you all know, Carol Barnes. She's going to talk to you through the spreadsheet a little bit, and then I'll cover the rest. So, go ahead, Carol.
Thank you, Chief. First of all, I apologize that I didn't get.
Is that on?
Can you all hear remotely? Can you hear Carol?
Hello, can you hear me?
I think you just turned it off.
Yeah, they can hear you.
Okay, great. Again, first, I apologize. I didn't get this spreadsheet sent out to everyone electronically prior to the meeting. So as soon as we're done, I'll make sure that all the aldermen that are doing the telecommunicating will have it. But for the rest of us that have the hard copies in front of us, I just wanted to briefly give you an update on the revenues, because we did get the final revenues in for June. And I'm actually going to take you to the back page first, and then we'll work our way back again from the front. If you look all the way down the June column, and you'll see a highlight of pink, you will see that the month of June, COVID-19 budget compared to our actual, we actually came into the good over a million dollars this month. And so we're really pleased that those projections right now are holding. We are not wanting to recommend that we change our revenue projections as we go through the rest of the year, because, as you know, we may be extending the COVID year into the fall months, and I think it's just better to be conservative with that $10 million number that we've been working with. But I would like to kind of go through what some of the highlights were of what came in better. So if you go back to the first page, we've got our first installment of property taxes. That actually was a chunk in excess of $300,000 of that million. And the next one is our sales tax and home rule sales tax did come in higher than the COVID estimates, but they are a little bit lower than what our normal sales tax collections would be as compared to last year. If you take a look at the income tax, we're very pleased that that number continues to hold. And that is one of the ones, nope, it's the next one down. So we're really, that's the, that's the personal income tax. The next line item is our replacement taxes, and we don't get those every single month. But if we go over to the next column into July, we were really pleased that that came in almost $120,000 more for July than what we had estimated with the COVID budget. So we're starting to get a couple of July numbers in as well. If we go on down the page for the utilities, our utilities are pretty much holding, holding on. You'll see in July there, if you go to the next column over, $187,000. It's gone up a little bit now, but people are starting to use their air conditioners. So we're getting some revenue on that. Our food and liquor is the one that we are very pleased that it's holding steady. If you look down the June column, we're at $121,000. We had projected about $100,000, and that $120,000 to $125,000 has been holding true for the last three months. And hopefully, that will continue to hold steady for the remainder of the year. This is one of the revenues, though, that I need to point out, and a reason why we want to continue to hold the $10 million number till the end of the year, is if you follow the COVID budget across the line, all the way out to December, when we originally did this back in March, we had been hopeful that, once we opened up, that everything would be opened up. And so we anticipate, like, the food and liquor to really come back towards the end of December. And that may not be, that may not hold true. It may be more in line with what we're currently receiving. And then I'll just kind of let you kind of look at the rest of these. Our use tax, the very next one, local use tax, we're pleased with that number. That is the tax for the online sales tax number that continues to hold strong. It's almost double what we thought it was going to be for the COVID budget. And the other good number here is the motor fuel tax, a couple more lines down. You'll see $102,000. We had budgeted 40, and so we're pleased with that. And if you turn the page, our hotel motel tax continues to be slow. I'm not sure, you know, how quickly that will come back, but we're very thankful to see that number jump up from May. We're at $49,000 for June, and we were at $36,000 back in May. And we had thought maybe we'd be stuck at about $20,000, so it has come up from where we had projected. The rest of the numbers are pretty much in line. If you look at the water and sewer use fees, you'll see those are, the actuals are actually down. And I'm not sure if Tony Lodi had sent out an email to you, but the usage overall is down. And I think part of it is, is businesses being down or people just being conservative. So the usage is down for both water and sewer. And so again, look at the total. We're up $1 million for the month of June. And then if you go clear over to the right-hand side, again, highlighted in pink, you will see year-to-date, total, total across those first six months, we are up about $1.169,000 for the six months. If we were to do reestimates, you know, that would put us more at the 8.8 million. So anyways, our numbers are, are coming in better, so we're pleased. The other thing I might just talk briefly about, if you go back to the first page and you look in the white green column, we did get projections from IML, Illinois Municipal League. And typically, on an annual basis, Keith has told me, we use those numbers very closely because they have access to statewide numbers that we do not have. And they only gave us updates for four of the revenue numbers, but they are, three of them are significant. For the income tax, am I on the right line now? Yes. On the income tax, personal income tax, they are projecting IML for the entire year to be $4,390,000. Our number, if you go back one column, is at $3,599,000. So they are anticipating to get almost $800,000 more than we are estimating with our COVID budget. They're projecting that it's going to be down from last year, but not as down as what we have projected. The next one that they are projecting is the replacement tax. That's our corporate income tax. That's about holding true. They're saying it's about $29,000 less than what our COVID number was, so we're pretty much on the line with that. The next one is our local use tax. They anticipate that we could be $300,000 better for the year than what we had projected. And then the last one, and this is for the motor fuel fund, a very good number here. They anticipate it to be up about $663,000 from what we had estimated. And again, based on the year-to-date actuals that we've been getting in, I think that number's probably going to be pretty close. But we'll continue to watch those. IML, about every two months, sometimes it's not until a quarterly basis, they come out with new projections. And then next month, this is the last thing I'll say, not next month, here in the next 10 days, we anticipate to get our sales tax and home rule sales tax numbers for the month of April. Remember, there's a 90-day lag on getting those numbers. So that's going to be the real, you know, the telltale. Hopefully, hopefully that number will be close to where we've been seeing it come in. I know it's going to drop a little bit. And then one more thing, and then I'll open it up for questions if you have some questions, is we did get our unemployment, and the Moline's unemployment. is we did get our unemployment, and the Moline's unemployment numbers did improve about 1.7% as in a drop. It was 18.8 last month, and it's down to 17.1 for this current month. And you know nationally, that number did drop more significantly. It dropped from 14.7 down to the 11.1. And we're pretty much, we're a little bit above the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois went from 17.2 down to 15.2, they dropped a full 2%. And with that, we continue to watch the expenditures. We're actually going to be going through an exercise of reviewing all the COVID budgets one more time, before we eventually come back to council with our final amendment recommendations. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Marty, did you have anything you wanted to add before we go to questions?
No, I just, the only thing I want to add is unrelated to the budget, but just related to COVID-19, and that is, all of our staff is back at work now, in their offices. We've done all the training with them and with the directors, so that they know all their safety issues and how to, you know, deal with everything, including masks and sanitation and separation and all those type of things. So I'm happy to say that there's no reported cases within our employee group at this time. So, that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I think so. Well, thank you very much, Carol, I appreciate it. Thank you, Marty. The next item is a presentation by Chief Goll, Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces Intergovernmental Cooperation.
Thank you. Reassemble here. All right. Everybody hearing me okay? All right. So I'm here tonight to make you aware of an opportunity for a reimbursement request with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. You may have seen this before from a previous police administration, comes around every once in a while as our investigations fit into a larger component. If you'll bear with me, I might be a little vague at times, because this fits into an operation and some, kind of some things that I, I don't want to get into. But I'll give you the overview, that the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force is an independent component of the U.S. Department of Justice, and it's under the direction of the Attorney General, and the OSADEV program investigates and prosecutes major drug trafficking, money laundering, and other high-priority transnational organized crime networks. These organizations are extremely complex, engage in a broad range of criminal activity, and their members traffic illegal and dangerous drugs, launder illicit proceeds, arm themselves with, and traffic in firearms, manipulate our financial securities, commodity markets, and engage in other serious criminal activities. The big dogs, if you will, at the, at the upper levels. A segment of our ongoing local investigations, the Moline Police Department, we've determined that they fit into a larger OSADEV investigation. And as I mentioned, for operational security, I'll be limited on public disclosure today, but basically many local, state, and federal agencies are participating in a joint investigation that fits together, and has been designated as a strategic initiative under the U.S. Department of Justice. In that program, the Moline Police Department is eligible for $23,400 in overtime reimbursement. I ran the agreement by our fine eagle team, and Dirk has approved that and wanted me to make you aware of that. The agreement is not a contract or obligation, it can be terminated with 10 days' notice. And furthermore, if the investigation ends and does not have any activity in 90 days, the funds will automatically be de-obligated. And finally, the agreement is for fiscal year 2020, and on the federal cycle, that would just automatically end in October this year, is our new fiscal year. And so this is important, as we try to keep overtime down, reduce or eliminate overtime, that we find these opportunities to find federal dollars, in this case, to fund our investigations, to continue to make our streets safer, but be fiscally responsible. So with that, take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you so much, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate the update. That is it for our Committee of Whole Agenda. Is there any public comment this evening, Janine?
No, there is not.
And there's no public in the audience, so I'd like to close out the Committee of the Whole and open up the council agenda. We will not have an invocation this evening, but we will have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams. Parker. Went. Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Skoomaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
You're on our request approval Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes of June 23, 2020, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on July 7, 2020. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3015-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 20, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10, Parking Prohibited at Any Time, by including 25th Street on the west side from 19th Avenue, north 60 feet, and 25th Street on the east side from 19th Avenue, south 60 feet. Council Bill 3016-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 35, Zoning and Land Development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporating therein as in 35-3103, Wade Investments 4101, John Deere Road. Council Bill 3017-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services of the Moline Code of Ordinances, by enacting one new section, 8-7500, Crime-Free Residential Rental Program. Council Bill 1073-2020, a resolution accepting the comprehensive annual financial report prepared by Baker, Tilly, Virtue, and Kraus, LLP, for the fiscal year of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, for all municipal funds. Council Bill 1074-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement with Holmes Murphy and Associates, LLC, for health benefit consulting services for a period of three years commencing August 1, 2020. Council Bill 1075-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a proposal with Mid-American Energy Company for installation of electric service to the Oak Glen Water Tank site in the amount of $27,852.26.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3018-2020, an ordinance establishing a temporary zoning moratorium for personal storage facilities as defined by Section 35-3401A of the Moline Code of Ordinances, and as listed in corresponding Table 35-3401.1, permitted land uses.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Resolutions. Council Bill 1076-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a law enforcement agreement, agreement and its order number one with LexisNexis CopLogic Solutions Incorporated for Use of eCrash, an electronic traffic accident reporting and transmission system.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion in this one?
We do discuss.
We can have discussion, yeah. Anyone?
Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. I'd now like to open it up for the council's business. I'm going to go around the council chambers and just call it your name, and if you have anything you'd like to share with the council, please speak out. Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker.
I just had a residential interaction this afternoon, and it was headed up by Rad Chip, and I wanted to thank him for the great job he did in mediating a couple of public factions that had just misunderstood pretty much around each other, and did a great job. And I want to thank him very much publicly.
Thank you, Rad. Alderman Went.
Your Honor, I do have one thing. Moline has a history of, especially the community, doing some pigeon racing and raising pigeons for that sport in our community. And because of that, there seems to be a small caveat in our zoning code that allows people to raise pigeons. In so much, we have at least one situation where, where someone is raising pigeons and has a huge flock and is selling them on the internet, and is running business out of their own, like they've given this. And so I'd like for us to direct staff to look at this issue and come back to council with a resolution on how to address the raising of pigeons in the city.
Marty's going to make a thumbs up that he will investigate that. And so how much time do you want to allocate?
Except for my eight, two weeks.
Yeah, in fact, we did respond to, or we are in process, I think, for the city that is talking about, and so, very hard, and we'll be following up the code, just address some of that, but I think we're probably taking a look and see if there's something better.
Yeah, I think because we did the urban pens, it probably is appropriate to all of those ordinances, we've got some additional issues that we're already exposed to with urban pens, that the pigeon keepers are exposed to, that we should probably quality analyze or address.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it will look like one of the first weeks in August.
Okay.
How's that sound? Okay. Thank you, Alderman Went. Is that it? Alderman Potter.
I'll figure it out.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I just want to thank the staff for all the professionalism, there have been a lot of issues lately in my work, and I just really want to thank, because sometimes these things usually go pretty well with the resident, in some cases we can actually say no, or be firm with COVID issues, and I just wanted to thank the staff for being professional and being able to, you know, follow through correctly and keep it clear. So I just appreciate, and I guess I could say some names, Brad Holland, Tony Lodi, Autocur, Kukubet, Chris Nice, please, all of them, kind of help me out and make sure that all this gets done correctly, of course, in the industry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman. Alderman Skoomaker.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron.
Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Berks.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One is, in case, I don't think the council knows about this yet, but the city received an IDOC grant, and it's to support the Form Based Code, they're granting us, let's see, I think it was 200,000, to support that initiative, which is huge, because we already had it in our budget, so that's helpful. But I wanted to specifically thank, let's see, it's 200,000 in criteria costs, and 160,000 federal costs have been included in the planning work program. So it's, it's a wonderful grant, and so I wanted to thank specifically the staff that worked on that. I would like to thank Marty Vonix, Carol Barnes, J.D. Sheltie, Jeff Anderson, and everybody else that worked on it too, I'm sorry, I don't have a full list, but also Jeff Nelson from Metrolink, he was our partnering organization that helped move us up the ranking, because we were partnering with an outside organization. So that is very good news for us at this time. Another thing that I wanted to mention was the Cures funding that has been allocated to the city of Moline. And so this funding just came out on July 6, and it is, the allocation is almost 1.8 million to the city. And the things that we're going to use that for are COVID-19-related expenses. So eligible expenses must not have already been included in the original budget. So there are things that weren't budgeted for that came about because of COVID-19. And so we're looking at how we can invest that money. Like, one specific example would be opening our parks bathrooms, the reason the porta-potties were put in, because that's a less expensive option than servicing the actual bathrooms we have, but the actual bathrooms would obviously be a better service for our community. And so, funding like that, funding, helping us if we need any support, looking at how we're going to make our, our budget adjustments, that kind of thing, will be eligible for that. So we'll be looking at that and figuring out what we can divert into that to help us financially through the end of the year. The expenditures are up to, I think, October 3, I'm sorry, December 31. Yeah, it's like 1.79, so 1.8 million. It's huge. So like, eligible expenses, I described what means additional expenses, but there can be medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, similar employees, expenses for actions taken to facilitate compliance with COVID-19, so that would be like the additional cleaning of our restrooms that wasn't at all budgeted. And then any other expenses reasonably necessary for the function of government. So it's new, and so we're working through the details of, of how we can best utilize that funding, but I wanted to make sure you all were aware of it. We can send this out to you, so that you all got that information. That is all I had. How about staff? Does staff have anything for the council this evening?
I don't have anything else, no.
How about anybody else? Any other staff that's here? Anything? No? Alderman Potter.
Your Honor, I make a motion at the council convening executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable imminent litigation, five ILCS 120 slash 2C11, review of executive session minutes, five ILCS 120 slash 2C21, deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, five ILCS 120 slash 2C2, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific, specific employees, five ILCS 120 slash 2C1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Waldron. We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Skoomaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Would you please clear the council chambers?